Good evening. We will call the Burlington City Council April 15, 2014, meeting to order. We'd like to welcome you here tonight. We'd also like to remind you to, at this time, to cut off all electronic devices. We'd ask for Councilmember Bob Wood for tonight's invocation.
Please join me in a moment of silence, please. Thank you.
Amen. Next item on the agenda is a presentation to the council. This time, we'd like to welcome Duke Energy, Mr. Davis Montgomery. Maybe not. Okay, we're moving right along. Next item on the agenda is the Code of Ethics. At this time, we'd recognize the City Clerk Renee Ward. Ms. Ward, welcome.
Members of council, it's my responsibility to remind you of your duty to avoid conflicts of interest and matters better before us. At this time, I ask for potential conflicts. Please let me know if you can.
Next item on the agenda is the...
No, item number six. I will ask, allowed to be recuse myself on that at that time.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes, March 31, 2014, City Council Work Session, April 1, 2014, City Council Meeting.
Motion, we approve the minutes as written.
Motion is second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Pose. Adoption of the agenda.
Move.
Got a motion is second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Pose. Consent agenda. These items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions about the following items, please let us know. Item 1A, to approve the following traffic commission recommendations. A, to place a mid-block crosswalk on Shannon Drive, 145 feet north from the center of the intersection of South Church Street and Shannon Drive. B, to remove the existing 3:00 a.m., 6:00 a.m. no parking restriction from all street time parking spaces in downtown Burlington. B, to set a date for advertising 2013 unpaid taxes for May 19, 2004. C, to approve an agreement between the City of Burlington and Synagro for a one-month contract extension for bio solids management through May 31, 2014. D, budget amendment 2014-43, police donation, spelled out in your agenda. E, budget amendment 2014-44, CDBG, the allocation of funds, is spelled out in your agenda.
Move, we approve the consent agenda.
Got a motion is second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Pose. Public hearings, too. A public hearing has been scheduled to receive citizens' comments on the proposed community development program, 2014-Fish-15 One-Year Action Plan. At this time, we'd recognize Shawna Tillery. Welcome, Ms. Tillery.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. The April 1 City Council meeting approved tonight as the date of public hearing to receive comments on the draft 2014-15 CDBG action plan and the home action plan. On March 31, we publicized the required 30-day comment period. To date, staff has not received any oral or written comments on the plan, and that will expire on April the 30th. In your package, you received a summary of the proposed activities for both the CDBG and home program. We did receive notification a couple weeks ago of our allocation for CDBG, which was This was a $46,000 reduction from the previous year. So I checked in to see why we received such a large reduction, and it was due to the fact that there was a change in the survey data that was used at the census level. They changed the American Community Survey data from 2007 to 11, and our numbers went down for those statistics. So that was the reason we received that reduction. All around the program received 1.6% reduction, but we were the largest municipality in the state to receive such a large reduction. It's 10%.
And we had a reduction last year?
No, we had an increase.
We were thinking a reduction and got an increase.
And got an increase, yes. But because of the algorithm that they use at the federal level to determine the allocation, we received a reduction in those funds.
Questions, Ms. Tillery?
At the federal level, this program's being reduced, isn't it?
Yeah, it is. Overall, it received a 1.6% average reduction, but we received a 10% reduction compared to last year's funds.
Is it because of a baseline?
It's because of the data that they use. They use American Community Survey data to kind of look at your numbers on vacancies and poverty rate and that type of thing, and that data that they use showed that our numbers had gone down. But it's not really statistically accurate, per se, but it's still what they use to determine your allocations.
The numbers went down. I'm not talking about population numbers.
Not population numbers.
Talking about population.
No, we're talking about like poverty and household composition and the different subunits that they use off of that data to determine our allocation. And it's an average. It's not an actual representation of what's happening in the community.
Skewed. Is this something that we can expect to happen every year?
No, they normally don't change the data, but like every five to seven years.
And no appeal process?
Not that I'm aware of, no. I contacted HUD and then contacted the census folks as well.
Any other comments, questions? Okay. This is a public hearing. Anyone on this side that would like to speak? Just state your name and address, please. Thank you.
I'm M.J. Wilkerson, the Director of Alamance County Public Libraries, which are located... Do you want my business address or my...
Home.
My home address is 834 Stockard Street, Burlington, North Carolina.
Thank you, ma'am.
We have, since prior to my being Director, been receiving funds from the CDBG to fund North Park Library, which is located in the Mako Bigelow Center. Last year, we circulated 11,000 materials, and we had 4,856 visitors. We had 919 people use our computers. We offered 95 programs that 2057 people attended. I have just hired a new head of youth services who is very excited about working with William Geddis at the Mako Bigelow Center and doing programming and really working to increase the people that come to North Park. And so we're excited about that. And the funds that we get from the block grant are used to purchase materials that the people in that community can check out and use. So we rely heavily on it, and we thank you so much for the support that you all have given us by funding us with that in the past.
Thank you, ma'am.
Have a question.
Question, Ms. Wilkerson.
So, we extend the hours at North Park or will they all stay the same?
In the summer, they increase. The only way that we can extend the hours is if the county gives us more staff. That's...
That's an ongoing problem.
It's an ongoing problem. We are better able, because of the hours that North Park is open, which is from 1:00 to 6:00, when Risha, who is normally the person assigned out there, has to be out for doctor's appointments or other things, we're better able to cover those hours for her now. But until the county steps up with staffing resources, because we get this with South Annex, there's a huge clamor to add hours to South Annex, we've got just enough staff to cover what we're doing now.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Cap Palar with the North Carolina Home Builders Association. Thank you for your support in the past of the construction training partnership. The Housing Finance Agency met last Thursday, and City of Burlington was on the agenda, so they would again match your allocation dollar for dollar. We try to impact affordable housing and do job training here and help the city in any way. We enjoy working with the City Department and Shawna and be happy to entertain any questions, and thank you for your support in the past.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else on this side that would like to speak?
Hey, I'm Nikki Ratlin with Burlington Housing Authority and Burlington Development Corporation. We're seeking assistance with our supportive housing programs for the homeless, chronically homeless individuals and disabled homeless families. These are HUD Supportive Housing Grants, and we greatly appreciate support from the city with the CDBG funds. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else on this side that would like to speak? Anyone on this side that would like to speak?
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Wendy Covington with Alamance County Community Services Agency. We will pursue the CHODO funds in order that we will be able to continue development at the Apple Tree Village subdivision, which of course is an 18-site subdivision located in east Burlington off of Apple Street. We experienced a decline in interest over the last three years due to the housing bubble in the area and of course across the United States. However, we have experienced a increase in interest recently, and we anticipate that we will be constructing there soon. Our goal is to complete two houses at the development within this next fiscal year. It does take quite some time to qualify families for a home there. Many of the families that we work with come to us with a number of barriers, but we do have qualified staff that are able to work with these families to get them qualified. So we do thank you for your support. We do appreciate your support of what we do, and we ask that you come and visit at the site and see what's going on at the Apple Tree Village subdivision. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Covington. Any questions for Ms. Tillery as we conclude?
I would like to make one comment. We did receive a slight increase in our home allocation for this year for both the city and the county, and our home repayments on our loans are up an average of about $13,000 over previous years. So we're getting more program income into that program as well. And we'd also applied for some additional urgent repair dollars from the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency, and we received verbal confirmation that we'll be receiving that allocation this year as well. And that's a continuation of a program that we started last year.
Any other comments?
Will it be funded at the same level, or do you know?
The urgent repair? It actually is more money. Last year, we got $37,500, and we should be receiving $50,000 this year.
Okay, go ahead.
Close the public hearing?
Second.
Got a motion, second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Pose. Thank you. Under New Business, 3, City Council will consider approving the Alamance County Arts Council by any willow walk on Saturday, June 7, 2014, in Willowbrook Park, and to include approving the serving of beer and wine. At this time, we'd recognize Carrie Worthy. Welcome, sir.
As you said, every other year, we do willow walk, and this is the year for that. We have over 38 artists that are going to participate this year. As part of that, there's a fundraiser on Saturday night of June 7, and it's a ticketed event, and we would like to have permission to sell alcohol with that ticket. It would be beer and wine. We are not going to do it ourselves. We will have a caterer who has all the licenses and the insurance that the city requires.
Questions or comments from council to Mr. Worthy?
Been successful in the past. Andy?
Carrie, why don't you tell them kind of what the benefits of this event in terms of art?
Okay, well, you know, the monies that we raise, and then we also look for purchasers so that we can buy artwork. Most of the artwork in downtown Burlington has been purchased through this program, and we will again purchase artwork for Alamance County this year, and that's where the funds go for this program, is to continue our public art program in Alamance County.
Thank you. Any other comments, council?
Move, we approve the requests. Condition upon the insurance is being in place.
Got a motion is second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Pose. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Item number four, City Council will consider approving the professional services agreement with EMA Resources to manage the City of Burlington's treatment residuals. This time, I'd recognize Mr. Patterson. Welcome, Mr. Patterson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Water Resources and purchasing staff has worked together throughout this year to solicit proposals for the management of our residual materials from our wastewater plants, which are commonly referred to as bio solids or treated sludge, and the settled materials from the McIntosh Water Plant, which is alum sludge. The city last received proposals in 2007, and it entered into a contract with Synagro in 2008 for the management and land application of these materials. This was initially a five-year contract, and last April, it was extended for an additional year through April 30 of this year. Earlier on the consent agenda, we extended that contract an additional month related to what I'm about to talk to you about. We received proposals from four firms, and after reviewing our proposals and contacting current and former clients and meeting with company officials, we recommend award of the contract to EMA Resources Incorporated, which is a company based in Mocksville, North Carolina, with operations based mainly in North Carolina. This will be a five-year agreement, and will include transportation and application of Soil sampling to demonstrate compliance, identification and permitting of land for the program, and preparation of reports for compliance reporting. The city continues to be the permit holder and will be responsible for permit compliance. Landowner agreements will continue to be between the city and property owner or owners. And our residuals management coordinator will be responsible for managing the contractor's operations and coordinating with farmers in the land application program and the timing and location of the application. EMA has been advised that they will be required to follow the City Council adopted policies of directing the spray nozzles down to the ground and to minimize drift and to apply to fields no closer than a quarter mile from the schools. And at this time, I ask council to approve the professional services agreement with EMA Resources. Mr. Ward pointed out a paragraph that we had in our previous contract with Synagro, and it was an oversight on my part not to include it in this contract. I meant to. And I don't have that language here with me, but that paragraph gives us the explicit ability to manage and regulate which properties...
And make recommendations in the word to put it or not.
And make recommendations, yeah. So I guess the request would be to approve the contract with that additional paragraph.
You have that in front of you, Mr. Worthy? Okay. All right, you have any questions for Mr. Patterson?
Go ahead.
So you have a quarter of a mile from the schools. You say a quarter of a mile.
Yeah, that was our discussion last year. The regulations are 400 feet.
Anything about this contract that would be a material deviation from the contract we have with Synagro as far as the process?
That would be very similar process in operations. They will have dedicated equipment and personnel just for this job.
And our monitoring process, obviously with us being the permit holder, we've still got to monitor things the way we've always done. Nothing changes with regards to that, because I know in the past, we've been pretty stellar in our ability to document how we handled things, and none of that changes.
None of that changes.
Bob is an option, wouldn't you option this?
This is a five-year contract with a five-year option.
Five-year option.
Do these folks handle any other cities?
They handle several others. I have the list here. Gastonia, Washington, North Carolina, Apex, Union, South Carolina, City of Danville, Virginia, are some examples, Spartansburg, South Carolina, Laurinburg, many towns and cities across the region.
Any other questions for Mr. Patterson?
I make a motion that we approve the agreement with EMA Resources to manage our treatment residual for bio solids with the addition of the items, as Councilmember Ward stated to Mr. Patterson. Second.
Got a motion is second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Pose. Thank you, Mr. Patterson.
Thank you.
Next, we have a report from Piedmont Tribe Council of Government Administration and Member Service Director Matt Reese. Position, classification study, and welcome, Mr. Reese.
Thank you. Appreciate that, Mayor Wall. Thank you, folks, for giving me some time to come and talk to you about what we got with the study so far. We've had a lot of cooperation from the staff, and that's been very helpful, put us in a good position to bring you some information. I've already had a brief conversation with Councilman Huffman, and he's advised me that the 45-minute presentation that I had planned needs to be reduced to about 4 minutes 50 seconds, so I'm gonna see what I can do for you on that.
Pretty good advice.
Pretty good.
Well, that's right.
The basics of what you need to understand about what we're trying to engage in here is it's a study of work in the organization, so that's what we're really after, is to study the kind of jobs that you have and so forth. It's not meant to be a study of individuals or employees. It is meant to be routine maintenance. It's meant to improve organizational management, meant to be taking your car in for a tune-up. This is what you're doing with the personnel system. The focus of that is to improve your ability to recruit and retain employees, so that's what we were about. Classification follows function. We're not here to try to define something new for the town. We're here to define what's the work that's going on on the ground and represent that in a classification way and capture that for purposes of market. So here's how we did that. This is an example from the town of Mayberry, one of my fine folks that I get to work with from time to time. Andy Taylor did this questionnaire for us here. And so this, all of your employees engaged in a similar exercise. They completed a questionnaire. Probably of all the products that come from this study, this is the most important, because this is where all of the employees signed off and said, "This is my job." So they identified who they were and how they work. They even went in and had a variety of boxes where they were gonna check, is this the standard that applies to my job? And then there were some narrative areas that you can see here where they actually defined what work they did, how often they do that work, what percentage of time overall that takes up. So a very thorough job was done by the employees. A lot of good prima data comes from that that you can rely on for further efforts in HR on down the road. One of those is that they even go through and check all of the physical abilities and working conditions that apply to their job. So if you have issues that come up with ADA, reasonable accommodation, and OSHA issues and so forth, you've got a point of reference for all of that. So I would just want to emphasize to you that that's a really good exercise for all of the employees to engage in. And probably, again, of all the products that were produced from the study, this is gonna be one of the most lasting and most important. So then our job is to provide that external objective analysis of job evaluation, benchmarking, comparing your jobs to those in the labor market, and come back and present that to you. So what we've done is we've engaged in that process. We've confirmed the findings with management, sat down with all the department heads and reviewed things, and now we're ready to present to you the implementation options for moving forward. So we looked at 131 benchmark classes. The target for those was to be at least 95% of the entry market. This is a minimum compensation analysis, so this is one of the most conservative analyses that we possibly could have run, basically saying if you were to offer a position that was to be published on the same day with Greensboro, with Cary, with Hillsborough, Chapel Hill, Meven, where would you all say that what the minimum requirements and what the minimum experience and so forth would be for the position, and what would be the minimum salary that you would have for that position? So that's the emphasis of the minimum compensation analysis. 102 benchmark classes scored lower than the target, and on average, the study is gonna move, if implemented, is gonna move the city from an 88-market position to a 94% market position. The market was a combination of the Piedmont Tribe and the Triangle, reflecting the labor market influences and commuting patterns of the community. I'm giving an example of that right quick. What you see here is the police officer one moving from a grade 20 to a grade 21. At entry, it was at 95% prior to the study. It's 100% after the study. You see the intersecting line going across there shows where average is intersecting there. Again, the interest was to try to get that at minimum. You see all the dark green lines that are there showing minimum. The last line on the right shows Burlington, moving from 32.9 to 34.3. You may be able to see on your line there a slight green line between the average and the dark green. That's showing you the distance that we tried to make, so that's what the study did. The study did that little green margin that's there. So it's police officer moving one grade from grade, or from an entry point of 95% to 100%. Here's firefighter, moving from a grade 19 to 20, moving from 94% of the entry market to an 89%, 98% score, excuse me, moving from 31.4 to 32.9. Again, you see the intersecting line there of average across the board with entry, proposed and actual being indicated. Equipment operator three, Public Works, moving from grade 14 to grade 16. I'll note to you, that's a two-grade increase. We had a variety of classes that needed to move two grades 10% to get from, roughly about 10% to move from the 93 to a 98% of market on that. Burlington, you see where it moves from 25.2 to 27.5. You see the average there at 27.8 and the entry and the proposed and the actual. You see the average there at 27.8 and the entry and the proposed and the actual, the competitors for that primarily being other cities. There had been some interest when we began the study in looking at the governing board. And so what you see here is all of the governing board positions together. Moving from left to right, you've got mayor, mayor pro temp, and council. And you see the numbers there give you what the average is compared to Burlington. So the first number there shows mayor of an average of 11,003 to Burlington's 11,004. For mayor pro temp shows 8,006 to Burlington's 8,004. For council shows 8,002 to Burlington's 8,009. So again, that's all of the positions there. Sorry that that's sort of small down there at the bottom, but it's the same competitive points that we used for the other employees in the study. What we are suggesting for you is what we call a proportional implementation. Whenever you do a classification study and you're implementing the results, you have the potential of compressing salaries together. Hopefully now we have a nice even distribution of salaries based on longevity, based on performance. A study can come in and set that minimum threshold, and all of a sudden, we compress salaries together in a way that we would preferably not want to do. Compression is usually seen as a bad thing. So what this does is address compression. It's not going to completely solve compression for you, but it's going to at least address it, that it's going to move all the employees to minimum or a one and a quarter increase per grade. So that's going to shift those employees otherwise would be compressed together at minimum and distance them out a little bit. That doesn't distance them out completely. If we've made a 10% change at minimum, we're only going to get a 5% at best change for the maximum that we would see there for compression. Again, all employees would go to minimum, but then they would be on this graduated scale for a one, two, three, or four grade change, capping out at five. Of those, 524 of the 612 employees were affected. On average, it's about a 2% change. Overall, we're looking at 410,000 increase to base salary. That's 1.7% on your $24 million payroll. I think I may be just under my five-minute timeframe for you there, Mr. Huffman, but I wanted to leave plenty of time for you all to ask questions and ask me for further information.
And the purpose of the study was to evaluate our staff to see where they actually rank and compare to other municipalities across the state?
That's right.
Okay. With that being said, and looking at your numbers here, 524 of the 612 were not in the range. Is that correct?
Are adjusted in some fashion by the study that you may have, there are two primary drivers in the study. A market adjustment where your classification is fine. You are a police officer, you're doing police officer work, but we need to move that series from grade 20 to grade 21. And once we start getting to that, that starts affecting the structure of police officers, starts affecting the structure of supervisory. We go back and check that with the market too, and if there's a way to stop that progression and say, "Look, you're okay at supervisory structure," we would have stopped it. But overall, we're looking at a one-grade plus adjustment for police and for fire on that. So for that entire system, you're looking at that. Then the other adjustments that you would see in there, mayor, would be an adjustment for classification, that you were assessed as an office support three, and when we looked at the work that office support threes were doing within the organization, you're out of classification. You need to be reclassified to another position.
Sure. Now, going back to the top of it where it's minimum of 1.25 and the one-grade change, do we have a number of employees that fits into that category?
Yes.
Do you have that on?
I don't have that with me, but I can get you that.
Okay. So each one of those from one grade, two grade, three, four, all of that can be, you can give a number beside each one?
That's right.
Okay. So let me ask you this then. If you have an increase, let's say 1.25 increase in a grade change, and we make that adjustment, that's the 14. If we make adjustments with all 524, that is the 14?
That's right.
All right. The next question would be then if they move from one grade to another in reference to the 1.25, 2.5, whatever, so forth and so on, do they do a merit pay on top of that? If the budget, we discussed that?
They certainly could. The numbers that are reflected there from market are based on the fall of 2013. So adjustments have been made throughout this entire period, and adjustments will be made again next year. So having some sort of adjustment that would move folks' actual salaries farther along would be appropriate. It depends on budget availability, obviously.
Sure.
The classification study will take into consideration their base salary, but it does not take into consideration a merit pay adjustment. Is that correct?
That's right. That's right. Again, it's looking at data from 2013 compared to where they are currently. We didn't try to forecast anything ahead.
And the reclassification is if, in doing your study, a job description didn't align with the comparative group, it was reclassification necessary to get them in line with their job description for that second?
Exactly right. And comparison within the organization, looking at equal pay for equal work and internal equity between jobs.
And the bar graph that you had on the police department, that brings us pretty much in line with all the other municipalities out there.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Can you go back to one of the graphs like that? Because the greens, for a person that has a hard time seeing, I understood ours in reference to elected officials. That was a great graph. These are a little bit confusing because of the dark green, light green.
That's right.
So take me through Burlington. Where are we on this?
What you have is your stack. You're all the way over on the far right.
I got that.
And then the darkest green is your entry. So that's showing graphically where entry is. Then only for Burlington, you will see a slightly lighter green, and that's the proposed amount. That's showing you the distance that's being made with the study's recommendation, intersecting with average. Then the rest of the very light green is showing you what actual salaries are. So those are showing what the incumbents, the average salary in that class is for those employers.
Got you. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Reese? And you'll get us that information.
Absolutely.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yep.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next, City Manager Harold Owen, 1415 budget overview.
Mr. Mayor, this is just the beginning stages of the process we're in. Obviously, as normal, we start work with department heads early in the calendar year, looking towards the 1415 fiscal year. Just briefly, on the general fund side, in terms of projecting revenues, it appears we have had some growth in a couple of areas. Sales tax, there's been growth this year, some increase in property tax growth. Certainly, we need more of that. Also, as an option is a possibility of really working with Almanzt County the last year and changing in tax payments to be consistent with Almanzt County, and that is also being proposed by Guilford County in terms of discounts. That's certainly an option for a small amount of money. There wasn't a lot of fee increases, so the reality of this is we begin to work on this not knowing where council wanted to go. Our primary objective was to continue to provide, premise of basic, for the organization to continue to provide basic services at the same level, which we previously offered without significant increase in cost to our residents, and our revenues are projected in that manner. In terms of expenditures, Stasmea Beach Department, we have looked at their capital request. Again, we recommend capital financing in some areas and funding some straight out of revenues. There are some areas where you will see some potential expenses. One will be, we talked about the funding for the expansion of fire services. As we get to the late 15 date of operating Fire Station 6, we have to, by contract, pick up the six COPS PD officers for 10 months. It's by contract. There is some funding there as we have done in terms of police retention. We have included some potential consideration for this, for Mr. Reese's study to be included. We see a small increase in business liability insurance. I think that's become, the market's getting a little softer. We had the fire over in sanitation, which I think has some impact on that. We see some, a small increase in debt service on the general fund side. That goes back to some of our capital financing possibilities. And there's some increases in animal services, which is shared by all the county. We're in a position where, I think I sent you an email today, the numbers of animal services continue to increase, and we're at a point where we really got to take some part-time positions and change those to full-time, especially in the area of vet techs. We need, we're running animal services, basically, option of two hospitals, and we're doing surgeries.
Bed hospital.
Two bed hospitals. And one at the shelter, and then, of course, at the Spade Newt Clinic. We really need to get some more qualified people to help with our veterinarian services there. And the other thing we've been doing is trying to use part-time people for basic maintenance in some of our areas and simply, it's with the numbers we've got and people coming, the numbers of animals we've got coming in, we just simply cannot depend on part-time people for some of these basic services. This allocation of money is obviously being shared by the county and all those municipalities. We're looking at a couple other, we talked about IT. We've got to upgrade IT somewhat in terms of providing internal services, and also we're looking at some communications and also looking at how we can work with grants in terms of grant writing to become competitive in that business. I know we just got through the COPS grant, but that opportunity very well might exist in terms of fire services too. That can certainly help us in the beginning phase of implementation of a new fire station. Truly, with, at the federal level where most of these grants are available, Representative Price, when he's made contact with you all on certain occasions now, his staff has given us some help and kind of given us the opportunity to see where some opportunities were that we just haven't taken advantage of, and we'll need some, we'll need some help in doing that.
Somebody to write grants is what you're asking?
A lot of it, and working with policy, yeah. We're not strongly budgeted in those areas. So as we project now, there's no tax increase. We'll talk to you all more as we get into this thing in terms of part of our process. And as you all know, our process continues. The first meeting in May, or that Monday night will be a budget work session, then to help us prepare for the actual public hearing for the budget to be approval in the first meeting in June. On water and sewer side, there are simply little operational increases. I got to done a wonderful job, but where we are and what we're facing is we have to start putting more money back to replace some of our aging infrastructure. The situation that occurred over at the East Plant, as an example, we've already recognized the Hollow River Interceptor line. We've got a portion of that already designed. We're waiting on permitting now. We really need to get in and start that process, early part of 1415 fiscal year budget, and that will then lead to the other two-thirds, and this is major money. That project could very well be between $8 and $10 million to replace that line. And that's the major line now that serves all of our north and our east growth or in terms of bringing wastewater that comes back and goes to these plant. We will be looking at some options at the south plant in terms of service lines also. Even those lines are not as old. We've got some issues out in Graham Hopedale Road in terms of some line work we've got to do out there, and also we have some water lines. So I think going forward, you will see the need of really investing in the aging infrastructure lines. What the staff has worked, Bob Patterson, we're looking at doing some possible changing of how we handle the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund in terms of distribution of allocations of funds. We believe a 4% increase may be what we're looking at to begin this process. And it's something that I really don't think we have much of an option but not to invest in money going forward. And that's just where we are now. Again, we're in the very beginning stages of this. Department heads did a really nice job. There were some things that people wanted that probably is not included in this, but we're working through it the best we can and trying to manage this in a manner that our citizens can deal with the upcoming budget.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Owen?
Harold, the Enterprise Fund, Water and Sewer Fund with the 4%, that's mainly what you think it looks like it's going to take to accelerate our capital improvements?
This year, yes, sir. This year, that would do a increase along with switching some money that we've put back in reserves to pay the 2.5 million, which we project will be the first third of this project.
We already had some put back, but you're saying in addition to, to sort of get ahead of the curve so that we can prevent another situation?
Well, that starts the first third. Then we've got the design, and we process of doing that now, the remaining part of that. The next fiscal year, that 4% then is there, that'll be used for this first part. That 4% will be there as a base, if you wish, to continue in terms of adding additional funds for project management. So I've got to tell you, it's, these are major outfall lines. These are the, this is probably the oldest one in the city, and it's one that does serve, in the past, it served a significant amount of our industrial properties.
You know, we've had, we, our annual meeting or once a year, the auditors come in.
The CAFER, when they come in, yeah.
They come in and they talk to us, and they've been doing this now for maybe as much as seven years now. And each time, they talk about us putting aside funds, and I think this, what we've had happen over here at the East Plant just only kind of accents the fact that you cannot, you cannot ignore the need for upgrading your infrastructure, and this is a business. It's a, it's a water and sewer business, the only responsible thing to do, and I think we do need to accelerate what we've been doing in the past.
Any other questions, comments?
I had a quick question, Mayor. Harold, when would you have sort of a preliminary budget? You know, we'll have it sometime prior to the first meeting in May, correct? Maybe a week before?
Yes.
However, much time in advance would be good because getting it to Friday before makes it a little tight.
And these are all, they're just estimates and just projections for you all to consider. We look for leadership from you all.
I think like Mr. Huffman said, that this year, the way the sewer lines and water lines, due to the weather constraints that we've had, it's just, you know, a couple more hits like that, it's just going to be tough on us. So I guess thinking a little ahead here to put something in place like this, to have funds available for, well, not catastrophes, but major breaks when they happen.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Owen. Next, unfinished business. Five of public meetings been continued to consider an application to rezon from R6 Residential District to CI Conditional Industrial District for the use of a parking lot. The properties are located on the east side of Turenthine Street, as shown on Almanzt County Tax Map, 113-466, Lot 100, and Almanzt County Tax Map, 112-464, Lot 22, continued from April 1, 2014, city council meeting. Ms. Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'll just briefly review. This request has the recommendation of staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission with the use and development conditions that were submitted by the petitioner, which have been modified since the last city council meeting, as stated in your packets. The requested use is adjacent to a permitted industrial use to the north here, and Mr. Lawson Brown is here to speak on behalf of his client.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Brown.
Welcome, Mayor, Governor, and Councilmen. We have modified it to reflect just conditional use for a parking lot only. Keith Hall is here from APB Properties, and happy to answer any questions. The neighbors that were here last time were concerned about connectivity to their residential properties to the east. We have assured them that this plan does not include any connectivity to the residential subdivision, and the parking lot is going to be built and lit in such a way that it would be very, be as least unobtrusive to their residential use. And I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Questions for Mr. Brown?
Mr. Brown, what's your town best where the cul-de-sac was? That was a specific area that they were concerned about?
That's correct.
Yeah, and that's been resolved with the?
That's correct. And they didn't come, they didn't, the first time that we heard any concerns from the neighbors was when we were here last time.
Sure.
I ran into one of the families who was on that cul-de-sac. Is this? Is this going to be a paved parking lot?
No, it's going to be a gravel parking lot. And we've worked through those issues with the planning department and the engineering department. It's only going to be used, Mr. Huffman, a minimum at present of a few times a year, maybe two to four at the max.
Well, she had actually, I don't know if she had spoken with you or she had spoken with someone, so I think she better understood that there could be a lot more offensive uses of the property. And furthermore, they were concerned about the water. And when this is a gravel parking lot, it's not really going to be a solid impervious surface to boot.
Although the state considers it impervious.
That's right.
But it's, it's going to be as least obtrusive. And we've got flood plain to work with, so, I mean, we've had it engineered, Aiden Stolz plus our engineers looked at it very closely and worked very closely with the staff.
I think it's a positive because if you remember back, Mr. Owen, several months ago, back maybe in the fall, when they had one of the events over at this place of business, the roads were packed with cars, trucks couldn't get through, it was a nightmare. So this is a positive move, I think, in reference to the business.
Well, we certainly think so, and I think that you should find it to be.
Right. This is a continuation of a public hearing, so I'm assuming if there's anyone here that would like to speak, we would give them that opportunity. Anyone on this side? Anyone on this side?
Make a motion if we close the public hearing.
Got a motion, second all in favor, say aye. Aye, pose.
I move we approve the rezoning, second.
Got a motion, a second all in favor, say aye. Aye, pose. Thank you.
Ms. Nelson, do you have some proposed findings?
The statement of consistency.
Yeah, I was going to add to do that.
Okay, go.
Also, approved the statement of consistency. The City Council finds that the above amendment is consistent with the City of Burlington's comprehensive land use plan, and this action is reasonable in the public, in the public interest, and that the amendment is compatible with existing land uses before, because it reflects the change in land use patterns in the area and will provide for the adaptive reuse of the property being rezoned.
Second.
Got a motion, second all in favor, say aye. Aye, pose. Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, item six. City Council will continue discussing the hiring process for a new city attorney.
Mr. Mayor, at this time I would ask to again be allowed to accuse myself.
No move. Second.
Got a motion, a second all in favor, say aye. Aye, pose. Thank you. Mr. Bateman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At our last meeting, we talked about this topic just a few moments, and there was concerns from council and I need further information. Specifically, I think the first issue we approached was, does the City Council want a part-time counsel? Do they want a full-time staff attorney? Or do they want to retain a firm on an as-needed basis? At the request of Mr. Ward, we did poll the apartment heads, and I shared with you the results of that poll, which was pretty solid in the fact that apartment heads see a real need to be able to access an attorney on an as-needed basis, which most of the time means pretty quickly. I think there was a lot of concern that if we went outside or even part-time, that access to an attorney is reduced when you need it the most. So I think from that perspective, the staff was in agreement that they would recommend to the council that you consider a full-time staff attorney. We also secured some information from the League of Municipalities about what states, what cities within the state do have full-time attorneys. I have provided you that list, and as you can see, just about every city or town of any consequence now sees a need and in fact employs a full-time attorney. That list, I believe, is in your packet. So, Mr. Mayor, I turn it over to the council of your initial consideration proceeding.
Okay. Did you start off this conversation with about consultant, or did you?
Yeah.
Okay. So that's probably the first thing we need to decide.
Yes.
Whether we want to advertise this and do it in-house?
Well, I think the first, the first order of business is to determine what type of position you're going to be looking for.
Okay, all right.
Because that affects how you approach somewhere to get it.
All right, so what you've said to this point has been the staff would recommend full-time?
Yes.
Okay, so let's, council members, I guess we open the door for some dialogue, conversation.
Well, I would sort of start the process here. I would concur fully with staff in the fact that I think it is very much, we've been extremely fortunate, and Mr. Stubbe, I'm much appreciative to the efforts that you've put forth to sort of hold it in the road.
Well, it's Bateman, but Mr. Stubbe's my fellow too.
Yeah, well, Bateman, you can handle him too. But, but my point here is ultimately, if you look at the list, the, that was most telling list when he handed out the, from the league of the, the cities with in-house assistance in addition to city attorneys and those without, and then those that had a hybrid. So, you know, we, I think we were put in a very dangerous predicament if we try to budget ourselves into that position, given the nuances of this position. So I think that wholeheartedly, it should be a full-time position. I don't know what the rest of the council feels, but.
I too feel as we need a full-time position from what staff has come back with, through Mr. Bateman. Having somebody here that they have access to in a timely manner would be, it's important to be able to finish the work that they have, that have to go out, rather. But a full-time attorney for a city this size would be the way I would like to see it go.
I agree with that approach.
Well, I'm going to take the opposite view. If we could find someone from, with the experience that Mr. Bateman has, then I would say that we could do it with a part-time attorney, but I might be outnumbered in this. So that would be my opinion. Again, it depends on who applies, it depends on the experience level, and that's not a knock on any one individual, but that's just the way I think. So I guess the way I understood it, if we could just show our hands, if you want a full-time, just raise your hand. If you want a part-time, raise your hand. So I'm outnumbered three to one, so we move forward with a full-time. So that answers that. Mr. Bateman?
Mr. Mayor, the next threshold question is the procedure utilized and actually going about the process. There are generally two ways of doing it. One is to use an advertisement process where we replace advertisement for the position in both local and regional publications, including league publications. And that will generally reach pretty much all the qualified applicants in the state. The other process would be to hire a consultant to go through the interview process for you and bring you some recommendations. That might take a longer period of time, and you have no guarantee that you'll have the type person that you want. My recommendation is that we handle it through our own department and advertise for you in appropriate places.
I certainly agree with that assessment. I certainly don't think we need to hire a consultant. I think we have enough professionalism on this, on this council that we've all been a part of something sometime in our careers. I think we can do it and do it professionally, and that would be my vote at this point in time.
I agree with it.
I would agree.
All right, so everyone agrees with us housing it inside?
Yes.
The next thing I'd like to discuss with the council is the qualifications and requirements for the position. And I have given to you a kind of a starting point, minimum requirements and duties of the position, which would include, of course, the requirement that you do be licensed to practice law in North Carolina, that's just a prerequisite. In my opinion, you would need at least eight years of overall legal experience. And that, you know, I've seen numbers go from eight years to 10 years to 12 years, but I think eight years is certainly a minimum number of requirement for experience. And then I think you need a knowledge of municipal issues. It's too big a job to try to come in and learn on the job. If you don't have a background in city government and city legal matters, it is very difficult to change gears and get into that. But even more than that, Mr. Mayor, I think it's important that whoever you consider has a broad general legal experience, because what we face in city government is what anybody faces in your government or in your company. We have personnel issues that come up, we have Maryland Act problems that come up, we have wage and hour issues that come up, and all types of HR issues that come up, as well as contract issues and tort issues on almost a daily basis. So it's a pretty wide-ranging position and one that does require pretty broad across the spectrum, general knowledge of the law. After that, I think you need somebody who will represent the council, and remember, who we're dealing with is your lawyer. That's his first and foremost obligation, he answers to you, and he represents you. By you, I mean you collectively. So it has to be somebody that the council is confident of their abilities, is comfortable working with. And I think we've all had experiences with lawyers, and we've felt good about some lawyers we've hired, some lawyers we didn't feel good about. For this job, you need to feel good about who your lawyer is and to know that you're in good hands.
Mr. Ward? You've got some experience to draw on here. What do you think?
Well, you know, I agree with what Charles had said, and I think probably maybe 10 years of experience, and I don't think that's being too far out. Having served in the position, I mean, I really, 10 years, I think would be good. I'd like to see, you know, maybe some, you know, instead of being knowledgeable of contracts, civil litigation, some experience in it. I mean, later in what's been proposed is that typically the attorney would manage a litigation, but I think even to manage litigation, you've got to have some experience with civil litigation. So experience in civil litigation, I think even some exposure to criminal law and constitutional law would be helpful, because there are, you know, surprisingly, you know, some constitutional law questions that come up from time to time. And in the last little section Charles put together about, you know, personnel issues including equal opportunity Title VII, it's hard to mention all of the alphabets down there, but ADA, ADEA, you know, Rita, the whole work, I'm assuming that's what you meant about that. So, of course, that would come out, you know, quite frankly, in, in the applications. One suggestion I would make, and when you receive, you know, receiving resumes, I'd kind of like to have some, you know, let's just throw this out, some limitation on how the length of the resume. You know, I've seen some resumes that go on and on and on. I could probably do mine in a half-page. It doesn't really take much. In other words, I'd like to see some limits, like a five, you know, five-page limit, something like that, because as I understand it, we hadn't got to that point yet, but all of us will be looking at the resumes. And I'm going to guess we'll get several applications, and, you know, if you get something 15, 20, 30 pages long, that may be pretty overwhelming. So I'd like to see that limited, if the three of you concur. Probably also a writing sample. I think that would be good. I mean, and that too, you know, and that could be only of the finalists picked. You wouldn't want all of them to do that. But I just wait, and once you get the finalists, maybe ask the ones who are considered to submit a writing sample. But other than that, I, I mean, you know, I think, I think what we have here get us going.
Let me ask, let me ask one more question, Mr. Ward, members of council. Typically, I would advertise a general salary range.
Well, that was one of the points I had here on this list. Is it possible we could go back and just get the salaries from these ones you've listed here?
Sure.
Let's just do that back to the League of Municipalities and see what they'll give us.
I have most of those cities' salaries already, but I'll give those to you.
I think we actually have some of them.
Oh, we do?
Some of the previous.
Yeah, we have.
We had requested earlier.
To that, I've added some others. Asheville, for example, is 135, Gastonia 132, Winston-Salem 146, in addition to the ones that you had previously.
Would it be, would that information be in the glob, drive classification study, Harold, that we just had?
I don't think so.
The board of positions were not.
Okay.
Do, okay, let's, let's just back up one second to make sure I'm on the same page. Obviously, Mr. Ward has, or Councilman Ward has thrown out some things that he would like to see added. Any problems with the rest of council members about what he suggested?
No.
Resume being maybe a maximum of five pages? Are we okay with that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay? Are we, okay? And then the writing sample would be towards the end of the process?
Before the finalists.
So we do eight to 10?
What I would do is, I would include in the advertising statement to the fact that those persons selected for finalist status may be asked to submit a writing sample.
Okay. All right, salary. Are we there? Are we ready to discuss that in reference to a range tonight, or?
I ask you, did we go to 10-year experience until eight?
Can you say it to 10? That's fine, 10.
Okay.
So that was basically besides the ADA and those type of things, the experience instead
of knowledgeable, 10 years, criminal law, constitutional law? You got those notes?
I'd pull it, yeah.
Okay. All right. Are we ready to discuss the salary range, or we want to wait till the next meeting or what? What you want to do?
I'd rather, if we could get a copy of what our salary range is now.
Okay.
Well, there's not a salary range for the appointed employees.
It is fixed by the council.
Fixed by the council.
So it would be good to get the league information.
Okay, let's do that.
And we can get our historical data. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, here's, here's what I'm going to suggest, Mr. Bateman, and council, please join with me. We make these adjustments, you get that ready, we send that out as a packet of information before or for the next meeting in May, along with in advance, the salaries from here and any history that you want, you were speaking of, Councilman Butler, for us in advance of the first meeting in May. Is that okay with the group?
And, Mr. Mayor, I will include in the packet a proposed advertisement.
Yes.
For you to look at.
Okay. And then that way we can have a final document to review, and if we need to wait, that's fine as well, but it starts the process moving. Okay. Any other questions in reference to that, about the hiring of the attorney?
One, I believe it was suggested somewhere in your notes, Mayor, that, you know, to narrow it down to five. I'd like to see, you know, narrow it to 10. You know, I don't know.
Well, you know what? I would say, maybe we shouldn't even put a number on it, and I'll tell you why.
Well, I won't put a number, I won't put a number in there. That's just for you all.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
After we get the application.
Because there may be only four that we like among the groups.
There's no point interviewing people.
I agree with that. All right, the purpose of what I put out was just conversation piece anyway.
Right, okay.
So we've accomplished some of that tonight. Any other questions about that? Job well done. Thank you, guys.
One question, Mayor. Is the advertising, is it going to be locally and statewide?
Locally and statewide, yes.
And then not in the League of Cities?
In the League of Cities.
I mean, not in the League of Cities, nor North Carolina League of Municipalities, sorry. All right. Mr. Owen, you said you had some comments that you wanted to make in reference to the debris cleanup?
Yes, as you all are, David, thank you. As you all know, the process has been going on now for about three and a half weeks. We've registered well over our anticipated amount with about 165,000 cubic yards of debris we picked up. The estimate's going in was 60,000.
That was how much, Harold?
Or 65,000.
The company that we were dealing with has made the, completed the first sweep, they're back into their second part of this, and as we expected, the amounts are not nearly as significant as we go through the second time around. We've talked to them, and they will be on board, the remaining part of this week and next week. And then what I'd like rest to consider is, we had, at the council, it did a free bulk waste pickup, approved it a couple meetings ago through the month of April. What I would ask is that we would extend that period until Friday, May 16th. And if we make that announcement tonight, we can let the public know that up until Friday, May 16th, we will still continue to pick up debris. After that date, of course, we'll pick it up, but that would go back to the regular fee involved. But that would give people another month to, if they had not got the debris out, to do so. And, you know, I would suggest too, that if, you know, if they do, I would ask, and if the media would help us with this, if they would call Public Works and let them know, because we're not, we'll be out looking, but sometimes, you know, cul-de-sacs, where will we miss it? If they have debris out, let us know. cul-de-sacs, where we miss it, if they have debris out, let us know, so we can file that and make sure we get there to pick it up.
That number's 222?
5,005.
5,005, you know, I was, maybe we need, Harold, we did get Rachel to do a press release, followed up by the night's meeting, that we can send out tomorrow, put it on the web as well, and get this information, because there appeared to be a lot of confusion between the first article that was in the paper, about the first sweep being completed, and they were already on the second one, they hadn't made the first round complete, so let's just, if we could, put a press release out to let the people know that we're finishing up, and at this date, you've talked about May 16th and so forth, so we can move forward with that.
If you guys agree, we probably need a motion to extend that no-fee from the original motion that went through the end of April to May 16th.
I'll make that motion. I second.
Got a motion, second, all in favor, say aye. Aye, pose, thank you, Mr. Owen. All right, Charles?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, we had, at the last work session, I gave you coverage of the proposed revised city charter, and we're hoping to try to get to the legislature this year, to be able to do that, we would have to act on it at our first meeting in May or at the work session. Ms. Booker, who did the consulting work for us, will be available either at the work session or at the meeting, as the council desires to try to fine-tune what's been presented, answer any questions, and receive any comments, in fact, if any of you have comments or suggestions prior to that date, if you could funnel them to me, I can send them on to the consultant ahead of time, but with the council's permission, I'd like for us to consider that matter at the next meeting for action.
Everyone, and all council members, be prepared and ready?
Actually, I'm going to be out of town, my wife has told me that this is our 33rd year, and she's put a different priority for me, and I'm going to be missing the next, but as a practical matter, I think that I would probably be asking, based upon the fact that I'm interested in the city attorney's job, and the, this thing has, this rewrite has some provisions in there regarding that, I'd probably be asking myself, asking council to recuse myself on that, the 3.01 provision in there, in any way, so go right ahead, that'd be fine.
So, is the thought we would have work session to discuss it?
Yes.
And then try to take action?
That would be my suggestion, Mr. Butler.
Okay, that's what I would prefer.
So, the Monday night work session, and then have it on the agenda for Tuesday, the next day?
Good.
Good.
All right, we're good, thank you, Mr. Bateman?
Thank you.
That brings us to public comment period, Mr. Kent Garner, if you'd state your name and address, and the topic is public transportation.
Yes, sir, I work at Alamance Rescue Mission, which is a program for men, it's under Piedmont Rescue Mission, and I have had someone come to me expressing concern about the public transportation, and of course, we naturally have a concern for it, because the men that we work with, most of them do not have transportation, the first 30 days, they are at the mission in the program, they are on restriction, but when they come off restriction, they're expected to go out looking for a job, and of course, that's a problem, and once they get a job, then to get to and from.
Sure, thank you, if just for the record, you state your name and address, please?
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
First time I've done this.
I understand.
Kent Garner, I live in Graham, but work in Burlington.
All right, thank you, sir. That brings the City Council comment, any from council? Happy birthday to Thomas Morowski, happy birthday. Otherwise, we entertain a motion to adjourn.